Thank you everyone for joining us today, Monday, November 24, 2025, for the Richmond Community Schools Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Americans and to the people of Richmond, which stands as the nation's under God, in the name of the Lord.
Can I please have the reading of the mission and vision statement?
Mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Vision statement, Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare lives, students, for lives of choice, purpose, and service.
Great, thank you. Moving on to public commentary, I don't believe we have anyone on the set up today.
Great. Moving on to action items, and I'm saying my only actual item, is 3.01, which is teacher-master contract.
I approve action item 3.01, the teacher-master contract as presented.
It's a motion by Member Brunton and a second by Members Schools. Any questions or comments? I just want to say thank you. It was a definitely team effort, looking to try to get this contract pushed through, and it's, you know, always a tight year, but I think it was great collaboration with, you know, everyone involved. So, thanks, Tana, for your...
I want to say thank you to those who served to represent the board. We had Kristen, Austin, and Kim this year, and I know that's a lot of extra time and hours. Thank you.
Great. I'm going to do a roll call vote since we have Mr. Stevens joining us remotely. So, Member Brunton.
Aye.
Member Loriotka.
Aye.
Member Pickering, aye. Member Stevens.
Aye.
Member Schultz.
Aye.
Vote passes by a zero. Moving on to item four this evening is our strategic planning update. Strategic planning phase two update. We have Ms. Ruth Stone on Zoom joining us. She's been helping us with our plans too, so we're going to go through just a little J4. So, Ms. Stone, you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. Feeling a bit underwater and, yeah, just couldn't make it so. I apologize. But I'm excited to share with you some of the work that has been done since June of this year in terms of strategic planning. So, I've shown it on the screen here is kind of the three phases that I usually incorporate with the strategic planning process or my plans, and that being the first phase is discovery, second is planning, and then the third is implementation. As you know, and if you may know, the community was brought together for part of the Phase One sessions that were in early June, was kind of a wrap of that phase. I think it started in last spring. That information was very helpful in setting the stage for what we carry on into Phase Two. Some of the activities that we've been doing have included lots of meetings, lots, lots of meetings and learning, and asking questions so that people will open up and we can start to see trends of where the school district needs to go, where it is now, and kind of how it's gotten there. We did, I think we did surveys, I did one-on-one meetings, reviewed the budget extensively. With this itself, we had more than 100 hours so far of strategic planning, meeting time and meetings discussing the school district, the community, and how we make it better. We also held a retreat that was very well attended for board members, central office staff, cabinet, and principals of the schools. I think there were around 25 people there. During that meeting, we talked a lot about things, saying things about where the district, how it could be better and how it could serve totally more. We also refined the vision, mission a little bit more and formalized some values. And then after that, I started actually drafting the plan itself, and since then have been reviewing it with many different groups. Upcoming half-time school working, and then we're bringing our e-draft of the plan back to the Phase One community stakeholder group so that we can receive feedback from them. And then we'll be looking at how, when we're doing the strategic plan, we talk about resources that they will need in order to achieve the goals. My personal belief is that there's no sense in putting a goal in there if you're not going to either fund it or stamp it or dedicate time to it. So, we want to make sure all of them aligns with what the goals are. Then we'll continue to, you know, iterate on the plan itself and review it with the administration and the staff again. And then we will hopefully in January, it's worth it. So, some more accomplishments that we have had so far. I guess this is a good time for me to just say thank you to all of the board members, the cabinet members, the principals, teachers, the subject matter experts who I've spoken to within the district about about schools, the students, you know, everything. It really has been helpful and wonderful to see how passionate people are about the schools and our department, the students, and what they can achieve. So, that has been a really wonderful experience. With the school board specifically, we've done a lot of training and reviewing and roles, responsibilities, and expectations. We also had discussions about the differences between a status quo board and a leadership board. And I'm happy to say that this board has committed to being a leadership board, meaning they will, they're going to make some tough decisions, and they may not please everybody, but they're, they know that what they're doing, they're trying to do in the best interest of the students as a whole, and how to set up the district for future growth and success. Another thing that the board worked hard on at the beginning was to determine the use of the, or the use of the remaining funds for the 24 coffers that was given, some used back. We also had some, board members were actively involved in learning more about the district budget and how it works. It is exceptionally complicated, as I know it, and where those funds go and how those are priority, you know, how funds are prioritized. Additionally, you know, just to reiterate, you know, the cabinet and staff have fully participated and from my perspective, seemed very eager to get started on making some changes and improvements and getting some movement in the educational experience and outcomes forward for the district. And of course, I've drafted out three different versions of the plan, and a few more revisions to have in them will have it in perfect. So, when it comes to a strategic plan, there are lots of elements to it. When we started this process, we started with the vision, which really is the overarching goal of why did you do this, where do you want, what do you want to happen because of all the work? Mission is to do more of the specifics of who you're serving, what you're doing for them. And then the imperatives and goals and objectives, get down into the nitty-gritty of exactly what we're going to do. And then while that model of the imperative is possible, supporting the whole pyramid are the values, the non-negotiable things on which the district stands. So, we have some of those drafted, and I want to read right these drafts, but here's what we have had long and what we're looking at. So, for a vision, the Richmond Community Schools, the missions have engaged minds, challenged learners, all achieving success together. This was a one of slug two, it has a double sense, besides the education side for the kids and then the success of, you know, the end goal is to get them all the way through school and leading a successful and fulfilling life. And the mission to be more specific would be Richmond Community Schools equips every student with knowledge, skills, and opportunities to fuel lifelong learning, achievement, and progress. Again, emphasize the school, working with every student, no matter what level they come in at, where they are, where they struggle, or what they're really good at. But helping all of those, all of the students in the district learn and achieve into their future. So, that's once you have those, we got into talking about the values, and these things are really showing that very, part of every decision to make sure that you're really involved to that. Obviously, kids first is the most important value. And safety, if the students and parents don't feel safe at the school, they probably won't come. And interesting, safety is no longer just about being in a building. It's such an awesome emotional safety and digital safety. And then academic excellence, prioritizing rigorous and high-quality learning. Now, rigorous doesn't necessarily mean that everything is going to be exceptionally hard. It just means that every student will be challenged at whatever level they are, so that they can gain the most that they possibly can out of their academics. And then integrity, words and actions reflect our commitment to doing what is right for the students, staff, and the community, even when it is difficult. As a leadership board, this is something that the board is going to, they're going to have some tough decisions to make. And so, it's important that their integrity stays intact. And then community is part of it, because they want to collaborate and develop and share implement steps to enhance the education, build financial stability for the district itself, and increase the student population. So, once we have those, we get down into talking about strategic imperatives. This is as far as the details are going to go tonight, so do not worry. We're going to keep you there forever. Basically, these are your pillars, your baskets, or buckets, whatever you want to call them. But for the district, they want to focus on student achievement, financial longevity, building for the future, leadership governance, and community engagement. So, student achievement is obviously, you know, how they want the kids to learn and have multiple experiences and options. They want them to be able to, with any whatever way that you want to, so whether they want to go straight from school to be employed, to a job or college, or, you know, a service, or whatever it is, they want to provide the education that will support the students throughout their educational career and then as they move forward. Financial longevity, I'm just keeping that, so we want to make sure that they're using their financial resources to the best of their ability to fulfill mission, vision. And building for the future is to create those positive and safe learning environments that maximize the student's potential. So, you have a lot of buildings and a lot of space in the district. So, they're looking at, you know, a senior master facility plan that will responsibly use the space that you have and financial resources, and have that be led by what is the best layout and which, you know, what goes where in order to maximize the student achievement. Then leadership governance, of course, you cannot have a district without its staff. You can't, you have to have teachers and administration, all those things. So, they want to work together with the board as well to ensure that the district operates to the best of its ability. And then lastly, again, we get back to the community. It is, with a community the size of Richmond, Indiana, the school district plays a very important part in providing resources for them throughout the district. So, of course, the primary one that they're, the resource they are providing are educated people who will hopefully, you know, maybe go somewhere else for education or something, but they will return to Richmond to be valued citizens. But then there are also, you know, the many community groups. I think there have been 900 different groups who have used spaces in the Richmond district, including, you know, anywhere from fields to kitchens to commerce rooms. So, the schools themselves actually provide physical space for the community to gather. They want to make sure that they do that to the best of their knowledge. Also, the electronic version of the district, meaning its website, is a place for community members to learn or we learn about various things and find resources. So, they want to do some work on that to make sure it's also lasting, maybe. So, basically, we've gotten through vision, mission, and that is, and we've started to go down the strategic imperatives, and now we're digging deep into the details of the goals and the imperatives. All of this is a lot of work, so, yeah, that demands the board and the staff administration of the district for taking the time and prioritizing, you know, thinking for the long term and not just tomorrow, so that the district can really be prepared moving forward. And next, next up would be January 14th is the school work vote on the strategic plan. There will be, you know, there are a lot of things that happen between now and then, but I'm excited to bring the completed plan to the board at that time and to vote that in so that they can get started on doing all the gritty things that are included in the plan. So, thank you very much for your time. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, you know, definitely thank you, Ruth, for keeping us all in line. It is a momentous task to do that. So, with all of the meetings popping on and driving down Richmond, and we definitely appreciate you, you know, keeping us on the straight and narrow to get this done. And, you know, I'm excited for that sort of next phase of bringing back in the Phase One participants. I think it's such a good outcome of last year, I can't believe it's been a year, actually, that I'm excited for them to come back in and share their feedback, provide insight. So, I have my questions, you guys?
Just some comments. I, I just feel like this truly has been a collaborative effort with a vast array of people groups. I feel like we've had community members, we've had students, we've had community partners, we've had admin, we've had board members. So, it's been exciting to see kind of everybody voicing and giving their thoughts. And I particularly liked Ruth's approach as far as, I feel like it's been very comprehensive, detailed, and I do love that there's going to be the follow-up check-ins afterwards, you know, to kind of, again, keep us on track. Where are we on this? Once the strategic plan has been adopted and finalized, there's accountability in that. So, I'm excited.
Thanks. Great. Is that great, Jeff?
Outside of, again, gratitude extended to all of the board, our strategic work process, one, but also Phase Two. So, as Mrs. Stone referenced, we are eager and interested in getting on the board and starting this work since active. As we know that the student outcomes will be heavily impacted.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you so much, Ruth, for being here.
Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Maybe I have some open forum, so if you want to have any, I am sorry.
Well, we did have a visit, we're going to talk about the city hall. Yeah, so we got to go to Crestdale, and we, we have a new administrator there, and she's doing a great job. And they are bursting into scenes. Like, as far as space-wise, that was surprising, just to see every nook and cranny being used. And just, yeah, it was, it was fun to get to have eyes on that building, so.
Moving on to item six is preview of upcoming meetings and events. So, our next regular business meeting is Wednesday, December 10th at 5:30. And then our next special policy meeting is two... And then our next special policy meeting is Tuesday, December 16th at 10 a.m. Here in this boardroom.
So, maybe. I just want to say the policy meeting, we kind of talked with the policy board and decided to alternate between 10 a.m. and the next meeting at 4 p.m. to allow people who may work during the day or work in the evening, and then we can adjust policies as needed to accommodate and get those many people who would like to participate in that presence. The last one was at 4, this coming one will be at 10 a.m. and then we'll kind of go back to, back to 4.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Moving on to adjournment and bell ringing, Dr. Ray.
President Pickering, trustees, I'm going to go ahead and commandeer the bell ringing this evening. And we simply would like to, on behalf of the entire corporation, wish our school community a extended sense of appreciation and thankfulness during this Thanksgiving holiday season. And so, we definitely hope that everyone understands how much we do appreciate their support and unwavering commitment to Richmond Community Schools. And so, we thank board, I definitely thank my management teams, principals, staff, the staff, students, and definitely the parents and audience who continue to trust us with their most prized possession. So, I think thanks to everyone. We thank everybody.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have for today. Meeting adjourned.